Thank you very much. Good report.
I'm looking at food, let me get this door.
Okay, what?
If I run out of food, we need to speak.
What do you want some of my papers? Pretty much. Alright, the next item on the agenda is, okay, we're gonna need a motion on four A. Someone wants to make that motion?
I'll make a motion with approval for 2017-18 calendar.
Any comments or...
Ms. Bligh, this is the calendar that was sent out to the teachers and we got feedback from them. This was overwhelmingly the calendar that they, that they supported.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Oh, we got, we got that calendar too.
Right. Yeah. This calendar is a week later than the other proposed calendar, which I think is better. I did not, did not want to see us starting school the second of August, meaning the teachers have to be back in July. I didn't think that that was something that was good, so I liked it this later. I still don't like three-day weeks. I just don't. I would like to see us get away from three-day weeks. I know there's reasons to do it, but I just, I just don't like it. I think, I think really good teachers squeeze five days of instruction into a four-day week and in a three-day week, it's really tough. I think there's, I think, I think it's tough to do a week's worth of instruction, but I'm gonna continue to record about that as many years as you said this in front of me, and otherwise I will certainly do.
Can I respectfully disbelieve?
Yes, ma'am. And as always, I was disbelieved as a professional educator.
We, we, we have a way that that has to be said in our group. What is this a...
It's a three-four.
No, that's not, you have to say it.
It's not, it's three-four.
Well, we're right.
About what you just said, because our curriculum is not lined up based on weeks. Our area curriculum is based on science and study. And we don't have a lot of three-day weeks, but the three-day week that we have, especially with the I-2 Institute, I think is well worth the impact that we give. And then I know we have the short week right before Thanksgiving, which is two days, but it's not just a sacred five days, five days, five days. I think my teachers know their hates here. Okay, there we go. You're outnumbered.
I've been on this board, I've been outnumbered a lot.
You know, you know what it did was, we got a problem. You might wanna tell that story, but maybe not right now.
Not today.
But it's a good story. Alright, let's vote all, paper. All aye, I'm sorry.
I had someone in the committee asking about the potential of moving either fall break or spring break to some other week rather than the first week of the month. She said that it was difficult for financial professionals, or next to impossible for financial professionals to take that week off to spend with their kids or go on a trip with their kids. And I wanted to know, is there any, if we looked at moving that one of those breaks to a different week of the month, are there any implications with regard to testing dates or anything like that, if we wanted to look at that in the future?
We can, and normally what we've tried to do is get like, we do nine-week break periods, so we've been trying to get in that nine-week, nine-week, another thing we've been trying to do is work with Washington County, the California Area Technology Center. So, we can do that, and I, you know, I think folks may also realize our legislators are in the process of passing a bill to encourage boards of education to do something different with their calendar.
I think it was actually sent to the governor today. It's not going to remain there that's doing anything different, but we are gonna have to invite a business manager, come on, to help us with this next year.
That we can, where I have to...
Invite what?
A business manager, someone in the community, we have to invite.
It'll be a board member?
No. It's a business partner. Okay, I doubt if we sell that through the board.
Approve the calendar?
Yes.
We can sell out both of them, I think.
Yeah, I'll approve the calendar.
I think this is, listen, putting a calendar together is not an easy thing to do. I'm not, I'm not critical of the folks that have put this together. They've put a lot more thought into it than I have. I'm, I'm gonna vote for it, I just haven't... And, and the one that really kills me is the day after fall break. That one, that one.
That's another professional growth opportunity for every person in our district.
I think we can do that for the week.
And you would get more days.
And then else you got a question for me?
No, I'm good.
Anybody else? Okay, I mean, Brad, did you have something you want to say? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the next item is B, for B, is a motion.
I move that we approve the local planning committee's recommendation for the revised district facility plan.
A second. Any comment? Yeah, right now. Don't do your bit at that.
This is good, this is really good. And I don't want to comment on this. This is, this decision is not based on one person or one idea. There are twenty good knowledgeable people in the community working on this plan for the best decision for our children. They are trying to make the best decision for our children, for the approximately ten thousand people that live in our community. I have done my own research and I have, and I trust, the community trusted me to make the right decision. My decision is that this is the best thing for our community that we have to take from. And I wanted to make that point in my head, that I do vote for this, due to the fact it is a good decision.
As the, as the board representative on this local planning committee, I want to especially thank Dr. Royds, who chaired the committee, and to all of the folks who were on the committee. We had some very productive discussions, conversations, and this was, this went through several different stages where issues were addressed, and then each step of the way was unanimous in the committee's faith, and, you know. I'm not sure it's perfect, but I'm sure what we're doing right now is not perfect. And I think this is a bad move, and I'm going to, I'm gonna support this bill this, this very hard.
I have a question to maybe Mr. Sloss or Scott can speak to, but if we approve this plan as it's laid out, what are we committed to? What are we obligated to? How much flexibility do we have? Can you speak to that?
We, we can, and Scott can help me with that as we go. Obviously, we want to wait to find out when we have the match, which will be next legislative session. We will also be waiting on possible additional funding for SFCC. It may be urgent need, but legislation could give us that as well, that, that was some of the things that Taylor County enjoys, and that's why they have so many building projects. Once that bonding potential is where we feel like we can start moving forward, the board will then look at that facilities plan to determine, from number one, what you want to do. Now, you can pick any item under number one. Now, obviously, the more money we will receive will dictate if that looks favorable in this plan. If we were to receive no money, not even the match, that's a whole different bargain. So that's what the board would do. Now, in number one, after we get our money, or lack of money, and you say, you know, if there's no way this is gonna work, you would in turn come to us and say, we need to reconvene the local planning committee and say, based on this much money, what do you think we need to do? If you didn't think that items under number one can be worked out with that amount of money.
Okay, so, so items would be new calvary, the late night center, and renovation of the hospital.
Right, and there's also some renovations of St. Charles and...
St. Charles is under Minnesota, too.
Yes.
So one D, one C, two approved.
No, we need these, all eight things. New service.
Service, okay. Alright, so, so we approve the plan, we figure out, and we find out how much funding we're gonna have, we can go in any order we want within those top roll rings. We can do part of them and not do part of them.
Yes.
We can do one immediately, we can wait some time to do another one. We have that flexibility just within the section one.
Sure.
And then if we decide we make something in section two that's not more important, we can bring the committee back and give them guidance, see if they'll put together a plan that fits what we think is necessary.
And the committee will reconvene on its own in 2019. So, so this is just a, this is just stop, you have to get us through to the next facilities planning committee in 2019.
You just want to go on the copy, you wanna go or you want?
I'm going on.
Okay, you want?
Should say it's aye.
Okay. I went to the, I think I only missed one of the committee meetings, and I have to say, and I did talk to some of the committee members, you know, after the meeting there, and they did a lot of work on it, and they, and they put a lot of thought into this, and you know, I've got the copy of it, and it's very thorough, I have to say, so. We're ready to vote? Are we to vote? All in favor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. Okay, the next item on the, on the agenda is item C, we need a motion. I'll make the motion approval, consider approval of the district reconfiguration.
A second.
Okay, now, what, what we're gonna do, we're gonna go into the discussion or any questions that we might have, but I would like for our superintendent first to, to let us know exactly what we're, what we're talking about here. And then we will have a discussion.
And I, I'm proud to be sure, you know, I could be a little long-winded when it comes to teaching, but I do think that this plan does address that. One of the things Ms. Duncan then talked about is the whole child and access and opportunity. And what got this discussion started was last year, we talked about the inequities, especially in our middle schools. And so, when you look at that and you look at this plan, the reconfigurations would start right away, we would not have to wait on buildings. And, you know, my thought process is, is I don't think the child needs to wait. I think they need to have access to opportunities immediately if we can make that happen. And, you know, I've worked with our central office staff, I've worked with our transportation director, our principals, and we believe that while it is five months, we feel like that we can go ahead and get this started right away. We've listened to the community. The, the facilities plan actually would leave us room to grow, but we can immediately start working on opportunities. With this, with this plan, we could actually have our children taking more elective courses, which would be the STEM courses, science, technology, engineering, and math. We would have performing arts. We would also have financial literacy and world language. That's just a few of those. And that can start immediately. And I would just ask the board to really think about doing that right away versus waiting until we can actually start putting shovels in the ground. You know, if you've got a child that's, you know, if we waited until we put a shovel in the ground, it can be several years. Even if we wait a year, that's gonna be a year that a child may not have that access, whether it's personalized learning, acceleration, whether it's just an elective course or even access to the area technology center as an eighth or ninth grader. So, I mean, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and, and I know that there have been folks that have said, why don't we just redistrict? Well, I mean, you can, but that's often. And, you know, this plan will address a lot of the academic needs and concerns that we have. We've looked at the data. We know that when kids leave elementary school, in some cases, they actually digress instead of progress, and we, we want, we want to catch that right away. And I really believe that our kids are going to enjoy going to school together, and our teachers are excited, our principals are excited, and then we're gonna work really hard to make sure kids have lots of opportunities to keep them excited, just like you saw our students here. There are kids that went to Beta for academic purposes, but yet they perform. And like Ms. Brady said, we have lots of kids in our district that have a lot of performing abilities, and that needs to be something that we wrap our arms around and embrace that. But we also have kids that would like to do co-op, and that's a group of kids that we need to access. And I just want to make sure that every child really has those opportunities to make their dreams come true. You can't just put the piece, the words on a piece of paper. We've actually, our behaviors and our actions. But we're, we're gonna make sure regardless, our kids are gonna have a good experience, but I think this can definitely move us forward and get kids excited about teaching and learning. We want our kids, we want our kids to be in with us so that when they get ready to get out or bump out, they're ready to be successful in that next level. Scott.
Anybody want to go next?
I'll go. One thing that I, I think everybody out there knows, that I, I spend a great deal of time listening to the community and talking to members of the community, kind of laying myself open to a lot of different feedback. And I think the one common denominator that I heard from a lot of people was that they were nervous about the speed with which this is being done. And I, I'll be honest, I'm one of them. I've done some of my own research and looking around at other districts in the Commonwealth of Kentucky to see when they start that redistricting conversation, which is basically what we're doing. We're doing a redistricting by grade rather than community. They generally start the conversation in one school year, there's a break for one academic year, and then they implement that following school year. Out of the twelve districts that I've found that have done redistricting in the last ten years, only one district in the state of Kentucky implemented the following year after they started the conversation. One of them waited until they got the shovels in the ground to actually complete construction before they implemented their redistricting. I think that delaying implementation could have positive benefits for our district, and so that we can look at the other one thirty-seven-two school districts in this Commonwealth and see the different grade reconfigurations and configurations that they have, look at those out there that have done similar outside-the-box ideas or innovative, creative ideas with regard to configuration, and learn from both their successes and their mistakes. I think that we can also, by waiting one year, we could, we'll know more about our funding and know exactly what we're gonna have to work with without necessarily having to take a step backwards. And I know that when we're talking about providing kids opportunities, we want to provide them those opportunities absolutely yesterday, not today, not tomorrow, if it was yesterday and that's when that needed to happen. But I think that moving too quickly can cause some problems. I think it could also alleviate, delaying implementation could alleviate some of the pressure on our teachers. We have a stellar staff of teachers. You guys are up to any challenge we throw your way, and I absolutely believe that one-hundred percent. But I also know that you have to focus on making sure that we finish this school year strong and we start the next one strong, and, you know, hey, let's take a summer break out here so that you guys can recharge yourselves too. So delaying implementation could allow some of those things to happen. I also think that doing that will allow parents to figure out the logistics. I don't think that anybody in this district that I've talked to had problems with sixth and seventh graders going to school together all over the district. I don't think anybody had problems with eighth and ninth graders going to school together. It was logistics. And a lot of that, it, it does sometimes sound like petty meat concerns, but knowing exactly what you're gonna do with your child after school isn't petty. It's not small, it's part of daily life as a parent. So delaying implementation could allow parents to figure out exactly what we're gonna do with regard to childcare, with regard to when they're gonna get home or how they're gonna get home. And I also think that this could have a positive impact on our students. This year's eighth graders will be able to go directly into high school, as many of them had anticipated doing. The, the transition into high school, we know, is a huge emotional thing to gear up for. I mean, they have to get ready for it, they have to pump themselves up to be a, a small fish in a huge pond, and they are, they've already started that process. So I think that that would certainly help the eighth graders. This year's sixth graders at Levin and Middle School will go through four school transitions in four years. Last year, they were at elementary school, this year they're at Levin and Middle, next year they'll be at St. Charles, and then that fourth year, they'll be back at Levin and Middle, where, where they will get an opportunity to stay in the same school for two years. If we kick this can down the road or delay implementation, that responsibility or that challenge will lie with this year's fifth graders that will go to Levin and Middle School. However, we can utilize some of the same one-on-one techniques that we have utilized with our seniors to prepare them for college and career readiness, have those conversations to say, where are you going, how are you gonna get there, where are you now? We can have those conversations with the families of our eighth graders to say, does your child cope, does your child deal with anxiety when it comes to transition? Do they have certain issues when it comes to getting used to new spaces? What kind of coping strategies can we help you and your family develop so that you all can deal with this transition when they happen year after year after year? So I think, again, when we're talking about giving kids opportunities, we want it to happen yesterday, but Benjamin Franklin also said that great haste makes great waste, and I don't want to be a board member who is wasteful with time or resources.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to publicly thank Carrie for scheduling town hall meetings, inviting me to come to a couple. I think that was a very enlightening and important process, and I think the professionalism with which you have jumped into your first months on the board are commendable, and I am really inspired by the work that you've done. We're gonna end up on different sides of this issue, and that's okay. I understand exactly where you're coming from. I've had a lot of those same concerns. But from a practical perspective for me, if we are going to consider building a new eighth, ninth center, which is in the plans that we've just approved, I'd like to see it proof of concept. I'd like to see it work. Before we commit spending millions of dollars to building this thing, I want, and I think it will, and, and I think you do too. I, I, what I hear you saying is, not now, I think it's workable, but let's give it a little more time. But my point is, I want to see it work now in the facilities we have before we commit to building a new facilities specifically for that purpose. This is a big job. This is, this is gonna be a, a, a big, a big progression. I think that our central office staff and our superintendent are up to that challenge, and I think this is an important step that we can make to provide equal opportunities to all kids in Marion County. And I said this at a meeting, and it reported in the newspapers, I'll, I'll say it again. When we can take a group of students and put them together as sixth graders, the quicker we can get them together to become a single school district and a single body of students, the better it's gonna be for everybody, because it's gonna break down traditional barriers that are based on things like geography and socioeconomic barriers and, and, and race. To get those kids together as sixth graders and have them matriculate together, I think it's gonna be invaluable, so. We're gonna be on different sides of this one, but I don't want you to feel like that, you know, I don't appreciate all the hard work you've put in on this, because I, I truly do, and I appreciate all the, all the time you've spent on this issue.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have a question for Sloss or Tammy. Ninth graders next year, what electives or opportunities are gonna be any difference than they would have had if we didn't do this?
We didn't.
Yeah, if they went to the high, if we didn't make a change, and they went to the high school next year versus staying at Levin and Middle, what electives and the opportunities, would there be any difference whatsoever, or the same exact offerings gonna be made available to them?
Yes, they've already registered for courses.
Okay.
At that high school.
Okay. And then with regards to extracurricular activities, clubs and sports and that, you give us a rundown of how that's gonna, if it's gonna be different or hasn't been.
Well, what we're hoping is, is to add opportunities for children to belong to, and obviously, the easiest way to do that would be with clubs. That would be one way to do that. We've also talked about adding the sport of archery, which could be boys and girls. That's, that's a nice sport for kids to compete with. That belonging piece is what we, I really want us to focus on, because I think when kids feel like they belong, that thread is removed. Because when kids don't belong, then they feel threatened. That emotional threat is as important as that physical threat. So, we're not going to eliminate any opportunities like Beta or, or Family Consumer Science or FCCLA. We're, we're not gonna eliminate any of those. We want the kids to have the same opportunities and hope to go.
Okay.
Will the children have more access to the social organization school or the counselor that's in the school in order to get field classes, if they don't keep the anxiety down?
We have, we're students. Well, we're, we have our normal counselors in class, and then we actually have a community care counselor in our building system. I don't know if I answered your question.
We did. Basically, just making sure everybody is aware there are counselors available within the school system, and there's counselors also off the school campus that would be available as far as within the community. They are out there that need to, and we make that awareness.
Okay, I just have a couple of comments really, and Carrie, I, I want to tell you that I'm proud of what you did, because, I mean, you went really well and done all those town hall meetings, and that's very good, thank you for doing that. And, you know, I guess, and I agree with Kayla too, you know, I, I think it's very exciting that we, we are really good in Marion County. I mean, this is, we're, we're good, y'all are good. We've got the best that you can have. And, you know, when you, when you have a district that's done what we've done in the last three or four years, I mean, that's really, really good. I think, you know, for us to go from good to great, and I think this will make us get on the road to being great, I think. So, you know, and I think we need to do something different. I mean, we're really good, don't get me wrong, I mean, y'all are really good, but I think this will then get us on the road of being great. And another thing that Kayla said that I really like is, you know, this is gonna give us a little bit of time before we know, you know, how much money we're gonna get. We're gonna get money, we know we have money, we saw how much money we've got right now. We're going to get money, we just don't know how much. This is a good opportunity, though, put this in place, and then, you know, if there's any kinks in it, which I don't think there is, and if there is, it gives us time to work everything out before, you know, we build calvary, which on this plan is building a new school here, and then before we build the other centers and make all these improvements. So, it's a good time to do it now, get the kinks out of it, and let's move forward and get us to great now. So, that's my comment. And if that's all we've got, we will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, we have one. Got it. Okay, very good, thank you. The next item is D, that we need a, a motion on D. I'll make a motion that approve the revised, uh, your 2018 district and South Bay's decision-making staffing allocation guidelines. Pat, Ms. Curry, need a second?
Second.
Are there any comments? Or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, the next item is item E, that we need a motion.
A move that we approve the addition of a community member for the attractive group retained faculty.
A second.
Are there any comments or questions?
Who's gonna, do we have people who volunteered to do this?
Well, we, we have the committee list, and we're having our first meeting April, not March the twenty-first, and I think this downs has a person in the community that has asked being part of the work, if that's okay. And it's okay with me.
Sure. Is there a... Is there a, is there a timeframe or is it just too, is that too soon to ask such a question? Is there a timeframe on the, you know?
We're going to work with Ruthane.
I think Ruthane gave him a deadline. I heard a harder deadline, I made work these.
You made it. You're up. I just wanted to make sure it's all right. But okay, it's all right. It's all right.
Right.
Okay. Okay. We will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right, the next item is student support. And the first item is A, need a motion.
I'm going to approve the fuel bids.
I'll second.
You got that?
Yes.
Okay. So you all know the use reason of all those comments?
I made the motion. I made the motion, Brad.
Have you got that? Any comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, we need a motion for B. Consider, I'll make a motion, consider acceptance of fuel bids, attachment number four. Need a second?
I'll second.
Are there any comments or questions? I think we've, we've got a copy, we've got a copy of those bids.
We sent this out, we only got one bid back.
Sure.
You're comfortable with this?
It's currently.
Good deal.
Ten cents over in the polls or something.
What was the gap?
Ten cents a gap.
Is I, I don't know, we're currently in five, nine cents of gas. Good. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, number, or C, we need a motion.
A move we approve the fuel bids for white oil.
I'll second. Any comments? All, all in favor?
Aye.
You might have something on your back. I guess you're about to fly tonight. He keeps on me, I'll get off here. All right. We didn't vote. We don't. Item D. Need a motion on item D.
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
I'd like to, okay.
Okay. On the D and E, okay. We need a second for, oh, we need a motion.
I would like to reconsider acceptance of a contract bid.
I second.
Any comments?
Well, it's already, I haven't talked to you guys. This is pretty much in line with Mark?
Yes, it is. That's right. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Is this a misprint? Are we really leasing this house for $2.22?
That's correct. All right. All right, we need a motion on E. I'll make the motion, consider approval to award a hay contract. And there's a list of who is awarded.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to award the GES contract to Tony Clark, the CES contract to Tony Clark, St. Charles contract to Steve Downs, the West Marion contract to Steve Downs and the Levin and Middle School contract to Tony Clark.
Make sure you're, Peter, Tommy. We really say, you know, I pay personnel and machinery and fuel stuff, so we're, we're sale all of the, we need. Okay. We ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Bye.
Yes, that is. On D and E.
Okay. And just for the record, for folks that are wondering, Pagan seven Steve was a low bid or was a high bid on this, which is what we want. We received guidance from the board attorney that this is in line with what, what we can do as long as paying it and laying on this thing and so we're, we're on good legal for that.
Okay, we have item, oh, we need a second. Okay, we need a motion on number five, which is going to be A through J. I mean six, I'm sorry.
I'm sure you know my name. Okay. Glad you're here. A move we approve student learning support, consider item six, A through J.
I'll second.
Right. Yes, any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The next item? We, if anybody would make a motion, because y'all have been feeding on, we did a long time tonight.
I second.
Seriously? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you all.